From the arrangement, we think will be much better just to go to the second paper. Justin Lee, you have forty-five minutes and maybe just forty-five minutes and we will stop at the ten. Ten at the Singapore time now here is not, not yet, on my central time. For whoever at this eastern time will stop at the, um, Justin, can you share?
Can see the screen?
Yeah, and also that let me just, you know, just because the first paper was, you know, the presenter was not there. I wish that whoever is in the room that can ask questions, that would be, we want to solicit more question, more discussions so that we have a full one type of presentation. Otherwise, it's really boring, to be honest. Okay, good. Justin, please.
All right. So thanks for having the paper on the program. So this is joint work with Hana and Jigba, who is all, both of them are in the sessions. And this paper is about an economic model of consensus. And especially, we're going to look into a classic problem in computer science and distributed consensus called Byzantine general, a Byzantine fault tolerance problem. And we are going to analyze Byzantine fault tolerance problems from an economics perspective. So the so-called Byzantine fault tolerance problem is a classic problem in computer science and especially in distributed computing. In recent years, the B F P, the B F P problem has been inspiring many new blockchain applications. For example, Ethereum two point O and Facebook's D M or Libra or Tendermint. And so this is a classic problem. And because of these new applications, there's a resurgence of interest for this, for this, for this classic problem. So in the traditional C S literature, when they deal with this Byzantine fault tolerance problem, which will give you more details later, they assume that the people who participate in this, in this consensus can be trusted, at least some of them can be trusted. However, when we apply these B F P problem to these more new blockchain applications, we'll be in an adversarial environment. So that puts a question about that we actually really need to analyze the incentives behind those computer nodes who participate in this distributed consensus. So we spent a lot of time trying to learn about how the distributed consensus actually worked in the C S literature. And here is some very brief summary about how we view this Byzantine fault tolerance problem from an economist's perspective. So typically, in the distributed consensus or the Byzantine fault tolerance problem, for layman's term, it's basically just saying that we have a bunch of computer nodes who would like to communicate with each other and eventually lead to a agreement. Right? So this is really non-rigorous and layman's term. So in the C S literature, they assume that those who participate in this, in this game are, include nodes who are Byzantine. And the Byzantine nodes effectively, they can just behave arbitrarily. Right? So because they will, their behavior is unpredictable and predictable and it's arbitrary. So we think that the C, what the C S literature implicitly has been assuming is that those who are not Byzantine, those nodes who are not Byzantine, and also whoever is designing the consensus protocol effectively would be concerned about whatever is the worst case scenario for them, which we will make more precise later. So this is what we see from the C S literature. And second is that because it's distributed consensus, it's, it's, there's a very nature, the very feature of decentralization ensures that each node only has local information. There, so there's no global knowledge about everybody, what everybody knows. So all the computer nodes, they have to make decisions based on their local information. So this is another second important feature. And finally, we said that the C S literature assumed that there are some Byzantine nodes who can behave arbitrarily. And they also assume that those who are not Byzantine are so-called honest nodes. So the scientists who develop those B F P, B F P protocols, they would just stipulate certain so-called honest strategies for those who are not Byzantine. So basically, these so-called non-Byzantine nodes are just going to be treated like machines without any incentive concerns. So there is no discussion about whether they are rational or not. But as in my previous slide has hopefully clarified that, when we apply those B F P protocols in adversarial environment, then we should really think about the incentives behind those non-Byzantine nodes. So with these in mind, in this paper, we would like to develop an economic framework that to incorporate all these above elements. So in specifically, we would like to have a game among Byzantine nodes and nodes who are rational. And because these rational nodes would be concerned about the worst case scenarios, just like they think about what's the worst that can happen in terms of what Byzantine nodes can do. So we will use the, the concept in economics called ambiguity aversion to model their preferences. So ambiguity, we'll give more details about that, but simply put, that there's a term in economics called notion uncertainty. That simply means that unlike someone who's facing some risky situations, right? For example, like a risky situation would be the case, for example, the, the rational nodes that the Byzantine nodes may do action, do one action with certain probability and do another with some other probability. But in the case of notion uncertainty is that they only know what are the potentially possible actions that Byzantine nodes can take, but they have no idea about the probability distribution. So in, along with ambiguity aversion, that simply means that those rational nodes would in situations always think about what the worst, what is the worst case that can happen in terms of what Byzantine nodes do. And finally, as we said that, because, because of the very feature of decentralization, all the nodes, especially those irrational nodes, they have to make decisions or inferences based on their local information. So the goal of this paper is trying to build an economic framework to analyze the implications of all these widely used Byzantine fault tolerance protocols, incorporating these important elements from the C S literature. Our goal is not trying to replicate the C S results, or is really trying to explore what these very features of Byzantine fault tolerance can tell, can inform us as economists. All right. So this high level discussion may seem a little bit abstract to you. So now we are going to move on to a very specific model and hopefully we will make these high level points more clear. So we are going to define a so-called consensus game. And now I'm going to give you step by step, what are the sequence of moves within this game? So first of all, this consensus game is a game among N plus one computer nodes. So you can think about there's N plus one players. And first, the nature will move. So the nature would just randomly select one of these N plus one computer nodes as a so-called leader. And then we will denote all the other computer nodes as so-called backups. Right? So you can think about the game is composed of one leader and N backups. So the leader will move first. So the leader will decide on whether to send a message, which we denote M, to each backup node. So that this, so, so for example, in the classic Byzantine generals problem, for those who are computer science who are familiar with the Byzantine generals problem, the message M would just be that the leader orders all the backup attack, attack the capital. So, so the leader can also choose to, it doesn't, so by default, the leader may, may just choose to broadcast the message M. That means just send the M to all other N nodes, all other N backups. But it does not have to. So the action space of the leader is to choose for each backup whether to send the message or not. Right? So this is the first step of, well, this is, if you do not include the nature, this is the first step of within this game. So once the leader has moved, will the backups will now begin to move? So the backup will now have two, a backup after the leader has moved, the backup will face two situations. The first is that if the leader, if the backup receives the message from the leader, then the backup, it can decide on whether to forward this message to all the other, all the other nodes. Right? And again, this, the action space for the backup is also that you can choose to forward the message to each other node, or you can choose to selectively forward to some people. So, or you just may choose to not forward those messages at all, right? There's also a situation in that if the backup does not receive the message from the leader, which we just would denote it as the backup receiving an empty set from, from the leader, then there is nothing to do for the backup, right? So this is a, a simple case. So finally, once the backup has, all the backups has finished, has done with their forward, each node will then decide on whether to commit to this message. If they commit to this message, they basically contributes to, effectively, in layman's term, we can effectively think about as committing to M is like they would view that the consensus on M will be successful. So again, the, when the commit, commitment decision has to be based on every node's local information set. And namely, for a particular backup, right, his local information set would be whether he, he receives the message from the leader in the second step, and also how many messages that he receives from other backups. Based on this information and the node can choose whether to commit to M or not. So for computer scientists who are familiar with those Byzantine fault tolerance protocols, and you can immediately see that where this is coming from, right? So effectively, this is a protocol that has this, a so-called leader-based protocol. There's a leader who sends an order to everybody and everybody, all the other backups will have one round of peer communication. And then they will make decisions that are whether to commit to this M or not. So we consider this particular setup for since, right? Because there's only one round of synchronous peer communication. So in the classic paper, in the so-called Byzantine generals, Byzantine generals paper, which is the first paper that developed this concept of Byzantine fault tolerance problem. In that paper, they will study a multiple rounds of communication. And there's also this later on, a very celebrated result of the fault tolerance, they will consider two rounds of communication and with potentially multiple sequential leaders. So we are abstracting from these details and we think let's study a much simpler protocol so that we will at least kind of to explore what implications that we can, economic implications we can get from a simpler, simpler framework. And maybe in the future studies, we can add on to this so that we can see how our results might just extend to those protocols that are being used in practice. All right. So this slide hopefully clarifies the sequence of move of this game. But the description of the game is not complete without specifying what are the preferences of various nodes. So we said that a important feature of this Byzantine fault tolerance problem is that some of those computer nodes are so-called Byzantine nodes and others in our definition are going to be so-called rational nodes. So we, as, among these N plus one computer nodes, we assume that F of them are Byzantine. So they may just take any arbitrary actions, right? And arbitrary actions are basically like, if you are Byzantine leader, you can choose whether to, whether to send a message to others. Or if you are Byzantine backup, then you can choose that, when, whenever you receive the message, you can choose whether to forward the message or not. And also in the commitment phase, right, you can choose whether you commit or not. Global information. So these actions, all these actions for a Byzantine node can be arbitrary. And there are also N plus one minus F that just like, other than F Byzantine nodes, all the other nodes will be defined as so-called rational nodes. And the preferences for these rational nodes will be given, given below, right? So they, it would affect, effectively, all these rational nodes will try to maximize their utilities that are given by, give this, this matrix. So first of all, the communication, we almost can think about this communication as cheap talk. So because they do not directly affect these rational nodes payoff. So what really matters is whether they commit on the message or not. So if a node does not, if a rational node does not commit M at all, so it will just always get zero, right? No actions gives you nothing. If the, a rational node commits M, then his payoff would depend on, would be dependent on whether the consensus on M succeed or fail. So what do we mean by consensus succeed? Can we define consensus success in the case that if all, if consensus on M succeeds, if all the rational nodes commit M, if all the rational nodes commit M, the consensus on M succeeds. And then who, those who commit M will get a reward, which is called R. And those, if the consensus fails, then committing M would basically just lead to a cost or penalty of minus C, which is negative to the rational node. So the intuition for that is that for those who are in the, for computer scientists, the intuition is that the consensus requires so-called agreement property, right? If you commit to something, but actually people will know, you commit to the message, which people will no longer, would not really agree to, right? That violates the agreement property in the C S jargon, then you should just incur a penalty. And if you, if you do contribute to the consensus, if the consensus succeeds, then you will get a reward. So, so the key assumption, right? So is that we, if we look at this particular like to coordinate, rational nodes would like to coordinate with other rational nodes. So in a sense that, so just, just to be more specific, they prefer committing to M if they know that other rational nodes will also commit to, commit to M. And if they know that other, other rational nodes will not, not all other rational nodes will commit to M, they would just prefer not committing M as well. The problem with this, with this argument is that we are dealing with a game with imperfect information. So this reflects the fact that every node only have local information. So a backup would only know what messages that he has received. But he would not know what messages that other rational nodes would succeed, would receive. And also, they, they do not know perfectly what other rational nodes would, would do. Right? So they have to base on, use their own local information to infer the information that other rational nodes have received and then infer what action they will take. Then they will decide on whether they will commit to M or not, right? So in other words, any nodes will act upon this local information and set, and local information set after all those communications, the two rounds, the one round of communication. So this is the description of the game. So typically, in a, typically in this, in those like extensive form, getting this dynamic game, right? The, the standard solution concept would be so-called a perfect Bayesian equilibrium. So the perfect Bayesian equilibrium requires, is, consists of a set of strategies and a set of beliefs. So that the strategies would need to satisfy so-called sequential rationality. That means that at all information sets along the game, those nodes or those player strategies need to maximize their expected utility. And the beliefs, their beliefs needs to be consistent means that those beliefs need to follow Bayesian updating at all information sets. So this is the traditional, like standard, familiar way of defining solution concepts for dynamic games. However, what complicates things is that now we have Byzantine nodes within this game. And because the, all the, those rational nodes, they do not have a prior probability distribution about what is, what the strategies of those Byzantine nodes would be, right? So both of the, the concept of sequential rationality and the consistent beliefs needs to be, needs to be challenged. So, so the way we will need to do this, right, more specifically, with respect to sequential rationality. So if you would like to maximize your expected utility, but if you do not know the probability distributions of the Byzantine nodes' actions, how can you actually set expectation? And also for consistent belief, traditionally, we do Bayesian update. But if we do not know what the Byzantine, Byzantine nodes, the probability distribution of Byzantine nodes' actions, then it's also difficult to do Bayesian update. So in order to address these questions, we again look into the economics literature. Economists have already actually have a lot of powerful tools to help us encounter these problems. And this is the so-called multiplier model, the ambiguity aversion literature. There is an extensive literature on this, like some of them, like for example, Gobia and Schmider and Epstein, Epstein and Schneider, these are like classic references. These multiplier models. So what does that exactly mean? So in general, so a rational node with information I to maximize this particular object under this multiplier model, okay? So now let's look deeper, deeper into what does this exactly mean? So we can, first of all, let's forget about this term. If we forget about this term, then just this gives us this very classic so-called utility maximization, right? In a game, in a, a note, a player I would choose an action A I to maximize, to A I, choose A I among all the actions that he can choose to maximize his expected utility. And, and the maximization will be against what other, what other nodes would do. And also will be, the expectation will be conditional on whatever information that I know I would have. So this would be well-defined if we don't have Byzantine action, Byzantine nodes. The fact that we have Byzantine nodes, that complicated, that makes those, calculating those expectations difficult. So the multiplier basically assumes that if you don't know what are the distributions of the Byzantine node action and which is induced by their, their unknown preferences, for example, then you just, then a rational node would just be cautious and they will be so-called ambiguity adverse. So they will be just very cautious and they will think about what is the worst that can happen to them among all the priors over Byzantine's actions. So effectively is that we have a set of P of the multiple priors, for example, of Byzantine actions. And we will choose in, and, and the note I will choose an action A I to maximize the minimum of the, his expected utility, where the minimum is chosen is calculated over all possible priors of, of what Byzantine nodes can do. So we will use this, so we'll use this multiplier model to capture the preferences of these Byzantine nodes. Sorry, of the rational nodes. So with that, we will conclude the, the model specification, right? We have explained what are the sequence of moves and we have explained what are the preferences for actual outcomes for those rational nodes. And also we explain how do they calculate so-called expected utilities when they have, they are notion uncertain about what Byzantine nodes can do. All right. So for the rest of the talk, we will mainly focus on presenting the main result coming out of, coming out of this model.
Justin, be mindful of the time.
What, fifteen minutes? Okay, good. So what we'd like to show is that when F is larger, so like the number of Byzantine nodes is, well, there are at least two Byzantine nodes and not, and at least two rational nodes. And then when the reward for consensus success is high enough, right? Compared to the penalty for consensus failure, then there exists a unique symmetric equilibrium. This equilibrium has very nice properties in that the irrational leader will broadcast the, the message to every, to everybody. And a rational backup who, and a rational backup who received the message M will always truthfully forward the message to all other nodes. And finally, a rational backup would commit to M if and only if it receives at least N minus one messages or, or receiving at least N minus F messages with one from the leader. So by the way, there's always will be, exists a babbling equilibrium, right? Because we said that communication is like a cheap talk. So we know that there's always going to be a babbling equilibrium just in which just the nodes would just ignore the communication stage altogether, right? Regardless of what happens during the communication, regardless of what their local information set is, they will always choose to not to commit to M, right? This is always a babbling equilibrium. So a babbling equilibrium, and then we show that when, under these conditions, there only exists asymmetric national equilibrium. So for those who are familiar with the Byzantine fault tolerance protocols, you'll see that these, these behaviors, these strategies actually somewhat corresponds to what computer scientists call as so-called honest strategies. And so we noticed that the number N minus F appears a lot, appears in this, in this, in this result. So just to kind of have a remark on what this number captures, the N minus F is the number of other rational nodes in a, in a rational node, right? So suppose that you are a rational node, so you know that there are, because they are in total, they're N plus one nodes. So you know that there will be other N nodes. And because you're rational, so you know that there are going to be another F Byzantine nodes. So you then, you know that other than you, there will be N minus F. So why this particular number is important is because regardless of what the strategies of those rational nodes, we know that the Byzantine nodes can always prevent them from receiving strictly more than N minus F, N minus F messages. Right? This will happen when the Byzantine nodes just choose to never forward messages. So and also if the leader is rational, then the nodes will, will receive at least N minus F messages. Right? The reason is because in this equilibrium, the leader will broadcast M to everybody. So, so that there will be, at least N minus F backups will receive those messages. And also because the N minus backups, they will forward the messages to each other. So we know that if the leader is rational, we can get this number. But if you, but if you require anyone to receive more than this messages, this can always be prevented by Byzantine nodes, right? And this is a And this is important because we know that the uh the rational nodes will be uh. Max min over multiple priors, so they will consider the possibility of Byzantine nodes preventing uh the M S F that message ever to be delivered to others. So we'll show that these these logics will show up, will be used extensively in our proof later. Alright, so typically typically in the talk that we. Um people don't really talk about proofs, but I think that it's quite useful for us to go through uh the proof of this main result. Very briefly, so that we can have a sense about how does this concept of Byzantine fault tolerance actually benefits itself? And an economics problem. Uh i- in doing so, we are going to define a two possible uh action profiles uh. For Byzantine nodes, right? So uh the and these two action profiles will be extensively used later. And why do we single uh uh when we single out these uh action profiles? Because we'll show that they have some pretty nice properties. And also because that rational nodes are have multiple priors and they are ambiguous of over multiple priors, so they need. Each situations into possibilities into consideration. So the first is what we denote as A one K. What does that mean? The A is action profile and uh one is that if you are a node. That you receive, you are a backup node, you're a rational backup node, and you receive one message from the leader. And also, you're in total, you receive K messages, including the leaders and also other messages forwarded by by other nodes. Then you will need to consider the following possibility. That among the K messages that you receive. By the way, this this also is a case and that happens under Byzantine leader, right? So you know that you get one message brought one message from the Byzantine leader. And then among all the K messages that you have received. The maximum prob uh possibility of them comes from Byzantine nodes, right? So you say say like you you say you receive uh say seven uh seven messages. And suppose that there are F is supposed to three, suppose that there are three Byzantine nodes. You assume that like out of the seven messages that you receive. At least three of them comes from the Byzantine Byzantine nodes, right? So and oh and the rest of them will come be coming from those rational nodes. So this is first part. So and then the best rational Byzantine backups, they when they whenever they receive M, they will not. Forward that message to anyone, any rational backups other than you, right? So this is a so-called A one. And A zero is a case in which that you do not receive a message from the Byzantine leader. And then all the messages comes from uh other uh and the maximum possibility possible number of messages come from Byzantine backups. And so and also these Byzantine backups, while they may forward messages to you, they will not forward messages to other rational backups. So why we single out these two action profiles eh is because. This is a case in which. The Byzantine nodes, the Byzantine nodes try their best to give as many messages as possible to you. While giving others fewer messages, of giving other rational nodes fewer messages. So we it's we can verify that if under the possibility. Then other rational nodes will always receive strictly fewer messages than you do. Right? So this will be very useful in our uh later uh proofs. Okay? So let's first prove that the the proof's so-called equilibrium existence. That simply just means that we would not like to verify that this particular action profile indeed constitutes a an equilibrium. So that just simply means that we just need to show that and prove that no one has incentive to deviate. First of all, irrational, if a leader is rational, then the leader knows. That leader can basically just predict how the game is going to end up. And the leader knows that follow within this equilibrium. Uh he will get the maximum possible payoff that he can ever get, which is R. So the leader, the rational leader will have no incentive to deviate from the equilibrium strategy. And also, we show that we can see that that all the rational backups. As long as they receive the message from the leader, they will always truthfully forward it. As because uh eh if they choose not to commit to M later. Uh they will always get zero, so it like just whatever they do will not affect their eventual payoff. But uh if they eh eventually they decide to commit to M, then a deviation will weakly lower uh his uh his payoff. And irrational backup then receiving fewer than N minus F messages from other nodes. Then that that node will just infer that first. Well, because if the right leader is rational, then you should receive at least N minus F message. So uh it it eh if you receive fewer than that, then you can infer that the leader is Byzantine. And then you can invoke the possibility of the two action profiles that we have just defined. So that we know you we this this rational backup I will know that other rational backups will receive strictly fewer than uh. The number of messages you have received, right? So. That means that uh the irrational backup receiving these messages should not just should not commit uh should not commit. And then a rational backup receiving an empty set from leader. And receiving fewer than N minus one total messages will infer that leader is Byzantine. And also, again, we can invoke this possibility of this eight zero K, so that at least one other rational backup will receive. Empty set from the leader and fewer than K minus uh few eh fewer than N minus messages. Right? So according to the equilibrium strategy, they also not commit. Because they will not also they will not commit, uh it's also optimal for you to not commit as well, because the the note mess the nodes have this coordination. Uh inclin uh eh inclination. So uh the most important case, however, is the case. Irrational backup receiving at least N minus F messages from other nodes and including one from the leader. So then we let's look at what is the inference that are that is going on within this node, right? But the eh the rational backup first, the rational backup will consider two possibilities. One possibility that the leader is rational, right? And the leader is rational, so then he would infer the posterior problem probability of the leader being rational. So by Bayes rule, right, we can write the probability of uh the. Of the leader being rational based on the information that eh the rational backup I has. And. We can see that this uh uh this uh posterior probability will be higher than uh the prior, right? Because the Byzantine nodes can effectively just uh mimic uh the Byzantine the 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 rational nodes. So that's why that kind of that that's why the posterior will be higher than the N minus the the prior. And equality hold if the Byzantine leader will just broadcast yeah, right? And the leader in though uh when you get at least N minus F messages. It's also possible that the uh leader is uh Byzantine, okay? And so because the the probability, the posterior probability of the leader being rational is is higher than the the prior. So the posterior of it being Byzantine will be lower than uh than than the prior. So that means that if it then because that means that committing M. When a rational backup was uh uh has this information set will have at least. The expected utility in 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 expectation. That the case in which the leader is rational, so that he can induce everybody to commit is is high. Is eh 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 is eh is higher than this number. And in this case, he can ensure uh he himself of getting eh the reward of R. And also that in the worst case scenario, when the leader is Byzantine, uh the. Uh the eh eh note I will get a penalty. So that's why that he will get this this uh this value in expectation. While not committing M will always give zero. So then invoke in the condition that we set forward that is as long as this reward for uh committing is a reward for uh committing while. The uh consensus succeeds is high enough, then it would be uh better off for the node I to commit to. To commit to M. And in this case, that means that he will not have the eh incentive to deviate. Right? So this is a case in which we see that we are basically uh. Combining expected utility with ambiguity version. So the node is uh he knows what this what 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 is the probability of the leader is being rational or not. However, he's ambiguous, is nation uncertain about what the 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 Byzantine nodes will do. So that within this multi-prior framework, we can actually uh calculate the expected utility uh of the. Uh of the uh of their air rational backup. And then finally, we can also very quickly and uh verify that eh irrational backup receiving all messages. Except from the leader will also choose to uh commit. Because because in this case, the the rational backup will know that all the other nodes would already have received this message. So that this rational, all all the other rational nodes will truthfully communicate with message with each others. So the conditions for others to commit to commit will be satisfied. So it is also better off for for a node to uh to commit.
I just.
What time?
I like two minutes, two minutes.
Oh, really?
And the most and the most.
At most the two minutes? Oh, okay, so it seems.
One minute.
Okay, I I was then I have to, so I I will skip this uh uniqueness proof. So uh we will actually we can show that the 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 because we said this is it is is a some unique symmetric equilibrium. We can actually show that this equilibrium is also unique. Alright, so uh skipping the so just you can take my word of the equilibrium uniqueness. Then we're now going to look at the implications uh from the this main result. First of all, we see that there that there is a presence of a babbling equilibrium, right? So uh so that means that those consensus protocols will always have multiple equilibrium. Uh number word in the in the blocking terms where there's always going to be forks, right? Even though the uh traditional Byzantine fault tolerance problems, they talk about this so-called finality problem uh properties, disagreement properties, consistency properties, right? Some of some of the is in interchanging uh terms. But that's because they assume those all the all the nodes will behave honestly. Once we allow those nodes to have incentives, they're always going to be forced, right? So uh so this is one implication. Second is that uh the communication will facilitate coordination. So uh we as we don't have time to talk about this, but if we can have a thought experiment in which that uh the nodes have to make a commitment decision. Uh right after they have received what the leader has sent them. So in other words, there is no one run of pure can be a pure communication as we have in the current model. Then we can see that the in from path to path, the one round of communication will tend to uh. Make the uh coordination more likely uh than under no communication, yeah? Finally, we see from our analysis that. A worker is key for consensus. Eh eh Byzantine leader, if we know for sure that the leader is Byzantine, then the consensus can always fail because uh. Because the leader can in eh because the leader Byzantine leader and other Byzantine backups can in can in induce. Uh can in induce all possible uh unfavorable action for box. However, in non-Byzantine leader can insurance. And this is that how how we how we did that in a proof, because like eh. We were we once you have received a certain amount of messages, you have to make inferences about the probability of leader being rational. Versus the being leader being uh being uh a Byzantine. And you know that the if you know for sure the leader is is irrational, then consensus can be insured. But if their leader is Byz, you know the leader is Byzantine for Byzantine for sure, you know that the the consensus will fail. So actually, ev- eventually, whether you will commit or not depends on a weighted weighted average between the case. Uh in which the leader is Byzantine and the case in which the leader is rational, right? So that's that that's benefited in our proof. And also that is somehow consistent with what CS people have been doing, right? So for example, uh. Uh in for example, PBFT, they have the so-called view change. So the view change may effectively relies on the knowledge that if we do this game repeatedly at some future time. After and I'll adequate a a adequate amount of time after the global stability time. So that network is synchronous, then there will be a rational leader that can lead us to uh good outcomes. Uh so uh how do I still have time?
Well, no.
No? Alright, so I'll leave.
You know, one slide or or this slide and then.
Okay, so I I'll I'll just I'll stop here and I'll leave this this uh. Uh this slide on on screen, just basically it kind of talks about uh what we think are our contributions uh from from our study. Alright. I'm done, you go.
Oh, thank you. Uh any any questions? Alright, uh so if there's no questions, we're gonna have a short break. And according to the time that I uh we will come back at the twenty. Uh ten, you know, whatever the time zone that you guys have, uh twenty, so now is oh six twenty, so fifteen fourteen minutes break. Uh then then we uh then uh then from Harvard, we'll present the double spend on the attacks. Okay, see you soon.